Order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Danvers Public Schools' mission statement, Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. Is anybody taping, filming the meeting tonight? Okay. Nobody else? All right, good. So we'll go to items of interest from the superintendent.
One item, we'd like to thank our Commissioner of Education for coming to visit Danvers High School on Friday. It was an amazing visit and also would like to thank the Danvers Herald and the Salem News for attending so that way they'll be able to share that with the community also.
Great. And anybody on the committee? Everybody good?
We do have one, I think, that falls on this.
Okay.
I'm having a little computer trouble here, so please bear with me for one second.
Let me check and see if there's anybody in the audience that has any items of interest. Anybody?
Hopefully it won't take me too long, Mr. Chairman.
Unfortunately, nobody has anything, Eric.
That's okay.
So we're coming right back.
I can help Mr. Cream. We do have our MTA, the Fund Our Future, so maybe they could make their way as we're getting our computers set up.
Here we go. Okay, yes, I want to introduce the resolution that was presented to us by Mr. Farrell at our last meeting on behalf of the DTA. And let me simply open that. You can testify, I'm pressing.
You're trying, yeah.
Yeah. So, let me read the resolution that I am proposing. Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. And whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully outdated for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services. And whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring Danvers up to $811,900 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth. And whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state, therefore be it resolved that the Danvers School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019. So that's my resolution, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to turn it over to our DTA representatives to discuss the specifics of it and why they brought it forward.
Yeah, thanks for taking your work from us back. We started the process last month and wrapping it up here tonight, hopefully. But yeah, we just, I guess I have a couple of names for a couple of the bills that are being filed or the acts that MTA has proposed. One is called the Promise Act, and that's kind of the K-12 portion of what will be the bill. And then the Cherish Act is the higher ed, public, college part of the bill. And so both are tied to increasing the funding according to the Foundation Budget Review Committee from a few years back. And they would be tied to Chapter 70 money and increasing funds for three main areas: health insurance, special education, and as well as support for ELL and low-income students across the Commonwealth. And so, you know, we just, as teachers and as members of the MTA are really here to just champion the needs of all the students of our own district, but also those of the rest of the Commonwealth. And so, we again just ask you guys and you all to take this into consideration and hope that you are able to come to how we see that this should be passed, this resolution should be passed here and across, you know, a lot of school committees throughout the Commonwealth.
Can I speak to it?
Sure, absolutely.
So, and I'm going to combine it, you'll love this because I know you like saving time, I can combine this with the legislative update.
Excellent, that's great.
You know, essentially, I think what we're asking here is for the legislature to look at the foundation budget and fully fund whatever that foundation budget may look like. I did receive, I think we all might have, a letter from a town meeting member who had some concerns about, will this result simply in more taxes? And my response, I guess, would be that the governor has proposed as part of his budget an increase of $1.1 billion for education over seven years. Current money would equal $1.1 billion. And he says he can do that without raising taxes. So, people may disagree as to how much it should be, but the point is that the governor certainly thinks he can do something without raising taxes. I also had the chance to communicate with Representative Spilly Otis's office today. And what he said is that the fact that the governor included this in his budget has certainly put it on the front burner for the legislature there setting up in each House subcommittees to look at the foundation budget and look at possible legislation. And so there's really more to come on that, but this is an idea that really has legs at this point, and it's on the mind of people in the legislature, it's on the governor's mind. It looks like something will happen, and I think by passing this resolution, we add our voice to the number of school districts and teachers' associations who hope that it will.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Anybody, Mary Beth, any comments? You're good? Dave?
Still confused where the money's going to come from, but I think, you know, our job is to get as much money as possible, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah, the way that I look at this, I think, is that something should be done, something needs to be done, something has needed to be done for a long period. I don't necessarily, I mean, it's a, once you get into the legislature, it's a, you know, a push and pull, you know, give me something here, I'll give you something there, whatever they end up doing. But the idea is to, you know, I don't necessarily know that, you know, you'll see all $1 billion or $811,900 in Danvers, but, you know, if we can stop making inroads to that, then I think that's good. And I think if we support this, then that gives some advice to the legislators in Massachusetts that maybe they should continue to focus on this. So I would agree that it's something that we should do.
If I may, just so, the Mas Association of School Superintendents, as well as Mas, well, the professional business management organization, just continues to advocate to add additional resources to education funding and not reallocating existing resources. So, funding to programs like Circuit Breaker for special education tuition, reimbursements, regional transportation for regional districts and other lines are equally as important. So we're hoping that we don't just see a shift from programs like that to the foundation budget, but really, as Mr. Thompson said, trying to find ways to increase the overall revenue that's coming to education and not just reallocating the existing.
Okay, thanks.
And I think it's just kind of bringing to head, like, a realization that from a lot of people that this needs some looking at, and the more eyes and people talking about it, I think, is for the better to, you know, find creative ways to fund it, creative ways to appropriate and everything else. So I think it's a good time for, you know, legislators, the community at the whole, to just kind of bring their focus, I think, to this problem that has been identified and just trying to bring it up to where it needs to be for all students.
Great, thank you. So, going to the school committee dean that you are, do we, what's the process that we do here? Do we have to have a motion, or is it?
Well, I think the resolution is sort of the motion and that we can just vote on the resolution.
Give me a second.
I don't believe so, actually. I could be wrong, but I don't believe so.
You know more than I do about this. All right, so we have the resolution, and then I would just then ask the committee all in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? There aren't any, so there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, that brings us back to, I believe, the student reps, correct?
Yes, yes, we have Cynthia here tonight with us.
You're on your own tonight, huh?
I know, Clea's very upset she couldn't be here, but she's quite sick, so it's better. So, it's going to be me tonight, droning on, sorry. At Grade Oak, the kindergarten students are thinking like scientists. In kindergarten, each teacher is teaching a different science unit to all the kindergarten students. One class is answering the question, what do living things need to live and grow? They are conducting an experiment to determine what plants need water, soil, sunlight to survive. Another class is studying the effect sunlight has on the earth's surface. The other class is answering the question, why do things move in different ways? And they have made pinball machines to discover the effects of exerting force on an object. The students will cycle through each of these units this school year. At Highlands, as mentioned last month, the three specialists had a chance to share what lessons they were engaging students in during their time while teachers were working on the FAR cycle. Mr. Gall, our music teacher, shared a lesson that involved a read aloud. It was a wonderful reminder that as adults, I'm not an adult, but they can take the time to enjoy being read aloud to, which I still enjoy, which ties right back into building relational trust and taking small moments to just be. Their leader, leading team together, consult, oh, sorry, our leading-together consultant visited Highlands on January 31st to meet with our leading-together team. The team was able to share with Nancy how they are continuing to build their relational trust and practice mindfulness with the SAP. It was very empowering conversation, and the team came out with some important next steps on how to keep us moving in the right direction. At Riverside, the second graders have been hard at work during their reading workshop time. Their current unit of study has been focused on the reading of nonfiction texts. Students are working to become expert readers by paying attention to details, understanding key words, and utilizing the text features, and reading multiple texts on a topic to grow their knowledge even further. Afterwards, children wrote about what they read and learned. Topics included sea turtles, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., hedgehogs, and Albert Einstein, just to name a few. On Friday, February 4th, second graders had a For the Love of Learning celebration and had a chance to share with one another their nonfiction writings about the topic they had learned. The adults at Riverside have also been participating and leading together. During the last early release, aides at Riverside participated in the Thank You Circle protocol. This was a way to heighten their awareness of kindness in a public way. As the workdays get busier and busier, this is a wonderful way to take a breath, appreciate adults' hard work, and make a connection with social-emotional learning among the adults. At Smith, in Science, fifth grade has recently started the Patterns of Earth and Sky Unit. The students were introduced to their role as astronomers, who are helping a team of archaeologists at a fictional museum of archaeology. They are tasked with identifying what might be depicted on a newly discovered ancient artifact and suggesting what might have appeared on the section that is missing so the archaeologists can ready the artifact for display in the museum. Fifth-grade student council members will be organizing a school-wide paper chain with reasons why students loved Smith School. The goal is to take all of the chained links and put them together in the shape of a heart to display in the entryway. Fifth-grade student council members are also organizing a winter accessory drive. They will be taking new or gently-used winter accessory donations to donate to the community. At Thorpe, last week, members of the leading-together team met with their leading-together consultant to review protocols, and they have presented to the staff to date, and how they can be utilized so that they have a greater impact on building relational trust among staff throughout the building. During Science, students in one of the second-grade classrooms are currently learning about why new chalte trees, which I'm not sure if I said that right, are growing in fictional Bengal tiger reserves in India. Students are plant scientists investigating what the chalte trees need to survive. The students are collecting and analyzing data to solve the mystery. In one of the other second-grade classrooms, students are creating glue recipes to see how different recipes have different properties. Students are glue engineers and are challenged to create a glue for their school that meets their need. The culminating activity for students will be a presentation to their classmates, using evidence as to why their glue is the best. Finally, second graders in another classroom are working on figuring out if Director Higgins should close the fictional Oceanside Recreation Center because there is a flagpole that is much closer to the cliff than it should be. Additionally, there is a nearby cliff that collapsed overnight. Is the center safe? The students are geologists working to investigate different landforms and what they are made of and how stable they are. At HRMS, HRMS staff and students continue their school-wide focus on practicing kindness towards all. The Helping Hawks Community Service Club is holding a winter coat drive. Gently-used coats can be dropped off at the school through February 14th. The February Project HAWF meeting focused on planning the school-wide lip dub video that will promote positive messages. The HRMS students participated in the annual deep-sponsored spelling bee. The spelling bee went 12 rounds and won, and was won by a grade-seven student named Isha Patel. Overall, 31 students participated in the event. HRMS is now hosting monthly challenges in the Hawks creation space. Each month, students are invited to engage in critical and creative thinking to solve problems and take on challenges. In January, students had to build castles using only cardboard. This month, students are invited to create altered book sculptures by learning new art schools. You can check out the HRMS library website for more information and pictures. And here at DHS, the DHS community welcomed Commissioner Jeff Riley this month. Commissioner Riley was able to see firsthand what DHS is all about, from our award-winning a cappella group Falcon Eyes to DECA to our interdisciplinary American Studies and Project Lead the Way courses. The highlight of the visit was hearing what our amazing students and teachers had to say about this wonderful learning community. Our DECA and Best Buddy groups had the opportunity to attend a talk by Bill Cummings. Students learned about entrepreneurship and philanthropy. It was an excellent example of inclusion and how we strive to apply lessons learned in the classroom to the real world.
Very good, Cynthia.
We had a few words, mess-ups, but that's okay.
I think it was good, I think it was good. Next month, though, you make Clea do the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to be like, Clea, it's your turn.
All right, thanks. So we're going to go to information from the superintendent, just a programming note. At, we have also the public hearing for the budget tonight. We're going to try to hit that at around 8 o'clock, hopefully. So if we have a lot left on the information from the superintendent, we may take a break and go to the budget and then come back. So those of you at home that want to come down and talk to us about the budget, you have 42 minutes to get here. So, that said.
Thank you, very good. So we're going to begin with our Danvers Pride presentation, and I am pleased to have our Riverside community here, and they're going to present about their goal three of their school improvement plan. So over to Mrs. Powers and our students who came to join her today.
Good evening. At our last school committee meeting, there was a discussion about social-emotional learning and how it has become very part of our students and staff's school days. Riverside's presentation tonight will only support that discussion and will give you a better understanding of what Riverside Pride School Improvement Goal Number Three is all about and how it embeds SEL in all aspects of our school day.
Hello, my name's Jane Sartoy. I'm a third grader. Do you want to learn about our pride letters?
Yes.
Tonight, we are going to teach you and help you to be a good friend and better person. In pride, each letter stands for something. P stands for positive attitude. R stands for respect. I stands for include. D stands for do the right thing. And E stands for effective effort. Riverside kids have been earning these letters by doing lots of great things. My school takes it pretty seriously.
Hello, my name is Teddy Tesaurus, and I am a fifth grader. Last month, I received the letter P from my math teacher. I earned the letter P because I had a positive attitude during a challenging fraction math problem. I didn't give up and persevered through it.
Hello, my name is Annabelle Boyd, and I am a fourth grader. In January, I received a letter R from my teacher, Ms. Perillo. I showed respectful behavior towards another student by helping them with spelling during our writing time. I did this without being asked by the teacher.
Hello, my name is Kyla Petuto, and I am a fifth grader. Last month, I received the letter I. I received this because during one of my lunch periods, I noticed that one student was sitting alone. This made me feel upset, and I wanted to include them with my friends at my lunch table.
Hello, my name is Kyla, and I'm a first grader. I received the letter D one day as working in my classroom, but some friends were trying to get my attention, and this was distracting to me, so I did the right thing with them.
Hello again. I received the letter E from my art teacher, Ms. Gorbario. During art class, I was creative and showed effective effort.
Hello, my name is Maya Shagroy, and I am a third grader. This year so far, I have received all five letters and earned a pride golden star. I feel like completing all of my letters has helped me become a better friend to my classmates. It has helped me be a better learner in class and be more confident. All of this is a part of social-emotional learning that our teacher, Mrs. O'Connor, has been teaching us during open circle lessons. On your Chromebooks, you have Riverside's Pride Code of Conduct and our school's bulletin board of pride letters and students who have received their pride golden star.
SEL is defined as being able to effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand, manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. By working on our pride, we feel that we are achieving our very best as learners and as people.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, first. I think a round of applause for them.
Absolutely.
So I have a question. Well, first of all, a comment. Great job, everyone. Great speakers. I am so proud of all the good work that you're doing at Riverside, obtaining all these letters. But when you get a star, what, does the school do something special? What happens?
So, we have a celebration at the end of each month. They call your name, and you stand up, and the teachers throw confetti on you, and everyone's always going crazy cheering.
That sounds awesome. And it's a great job. They're so happy and proud of you, and so are we. So thank you very much, and congratulations on your star, and congratulations, everyone else, on your letters. And I know you're gonna get all five of those, so very good. Thank you.
I think all of you guys did great. It sounds like a great program, and I enjoyed watching your principal behind you just kinda willing you guys to get through it. But she had nothing to worry about. You all did terrific. Thank you.
I love the bulletin board. Where in the school is that? Is it right up front, so everyone can see it?
The bulletin board is next to the cafeteria, so everyone walking by can see it.
That's great. That's awesome. And I'm thinking maybe Mrs. Powers should give the janitor a gold star, because someone has to clean up all that confetti.
Yes! It might be a good thing to do. We warned him every time he showed his rally.
So he deserves a star. Great job, everyone.
Yeah, great job. You know, I think you all should get stars for being here tonight.
There you go.
Okay? So, we'll give you school committee stars.
There you go.
There we go.
Great job, you guys. You all did great. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're very proud of you. Thank you. And we can take a moment to transition, so our elementary students and their parents can... You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Guys, did great.
And this gives us a moment to switch the presentation on our smartboard up here.
Oh! No. I did know, but my daughters loved it. Yeah, that's right.
We're making a switch here. There we go. Thank you. So next, we have our annual technology presentation, and as we try to do with many of our presentations, is to really bring the story, bring the people who are working with the tools that we're providing, and our town and our school committee are providing for our students. So at this time, Jeff is gonna do an introduction and then hand it over to our teachers and students about how they are using technology in science.
Just have to say, that's gonna be a very tough presentation to follow.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. In tonight's presentation, though, I'd like to show you a small sample of how the technology department's focused on creating a high-quality network supports the delivery of the 21st century curriculum into our classrooms. In your meeting folder, you'll find some data on both the infrastructure and the application tools that we've implemented to support this learning. However, tonight, I'd like to put a human face to that data, so I've invited Linda Armstrong and Kelly Boudreau from Greode Oak and from Highland School, and two of their students, Kalen Hempie and Josie Vogel, to show us a little bit about what they do with the online Amplify Science curriculum, the new curriculum that's all online, and show us two short simulations.
So thank you for having us. It was a nice little intro, hearing Cynthia talk about all the science that's going on at all of the schools. So Amplify Science is new to us this year. We are fifth-grade teachers, so our focus is going to be on two of the simulations that parallel the fifth-grade learning that's happening. So Amplify Science blends hands-on investigations, literacy-rich activities, and interactive digital tools to empower students to think, read, write, and argue like real scientists and engineers. So zooming in on the digital tools, there are two basic types that are included, simulations and models. And they serve as venues for exploration. Indeed, the first time the students have access to the simulations, we do not direct them in how to use them. They explore and figure out how the simulations are used. They enable data collection, allow students to explore scientific concepts, and show what might be impossible to see with the naked eye. One Chromebook is shared between two students while they are using one of the models or the simulations. And Amplify offers the following guidelines, which we post in our classrooms, and the kids are quite familiar with them. So only one person drives at a time. That means only one person's hands are on the Chromebook. Anyone in the partnership can make suggestions about how to use the app. You should talk about what you observe. Discourse is very much encouraged. And you rotate the role of driver. Amplify feels strongly about shared use versus independent use. They believe that shared use fosters collaboration, discussion, ownership, exploration, and problem-solving. And I always like to remind them that this mirrors how science works in the real world. Kalen Shortley is going to demonstrate a simulation from the fifth-grade unit entitled Modeling Matter. In this unit, students take on the role of a food scientist, and they are tasked with the end of creating a salad dressing, which they actually get to taste, that meets certain requirements, two of which are no sediments and no separating into layers. Now, the students know that the base ingredients for their salad dressings will be oil and vinegar, and they know exactly what happens when you try to mix those two materials. So Kalen's going to use a simulation that addresses the issue of separation, and this is where emulsifiers are introduced.
Okay. So first, you choose these two molecules. For example, this one. Wait, not that one. I think it's this one. Wait, it's just...
Two and four, Kalen?
I think it was... It might be this one. Nope. Yep, this one. So then you zoom in.
Kalen, can you talk a little bit about why you were choosing those two?
Okay. Sorry. So the reason I chose this three and the third molecule and the fifth molecule is because the threes are attracted to other three molecules, and the fives are not attracted to other five molecules, and they're also not attracted to each other. So if you zoom in, and if you look, it's also on the bottom, high, high, and low. And then if you look, the threes are attracted to each other, so they are clumping, because as you can see by the bold outlines. And if you stir it up for... Yeah. They will always just clump back together, and... Yeah.
So this is what oil and vinegar do?
Yes.
So what do we need to do in order to get that mixture to stay stable?
You will add... You have to add an emulsifier, which if you do... Emulsifier mode. Choosing the same two molecules. Three... Oh, sorry. Three and five, which have high attraction to the other three molecules, and not attracted to other five molecules, and not attracted to each other. So zoom in. Like, they're also clumping again, so if you stir it around. But the emulsifier is attracted to both threes and fives, so if you add a couple emulsifiers, you'll see that they start... They start, both threes and fives go on to the emulsifiers, and... And that's in the real world, that like, to the naked eye, that would be the two substances mixing. And if you take away all the emulsifiers, the threes will eventually just clump back together, and... Like, right here, there's a clump. Right here, there's a clump. There's a clump over here, and eventually, they all just... And then the fives are still not attracted to each other, so... Yeah.
Nice job, Kalen. So they play around with this simulation quite a bit, and they come to understand that prior to this, they know what dissolving, what happens at the nano scale, which is the scale that we can't see with the human eye, and this is just one example of how the simulation allows them to envision what's happening at the nano scale level. The next simulation, we would like to show, comes from a unit entitled The Earth System. And the student takes on the role as a water resource engineer. What you see pictured there is Ferris Island, and the left side of the island is experiencing a water shortage, and they're trying to figure out why and what is happening to cause that. So Josie's going to use the simulation to show how water vapor in the atmosphere interacts with the landform to create the rain shadow effect.
This is a model of Ferris Island. We are trying to figure out why it rains more in West Ferris than East Ferris. One reason why it might rain more is because the water vapor is evaporating into the air created in water vapor. These molecules are represented in pink. The wind is moving the water vapor towards the island. As it gets higher in the atmosphere, clouds start to form. When all the molecules get bunched up, it starts raining. Some of the molecules make it to the other side, but most fall in the west. After it runs, we can analyze certain water molecules to track their path. And when you track their path, you have to double-click the molecule. It also shows a zoomed-in image, the temperature, and the number of molecules in total. So you can take this and zoom with it, and on the side, it shows a bar of the water vapor molecules, the liquid molecules, and the total. And here, it says the temperature and the height it's at, and here's the picture of them moving. We know that this produces the rain shadow effect because the mountain pushes the molecules higher in the atmosphere and condenses them, leaving little rain for East Ferris.
Excellent job, ladies. So Amplify's philosophy is, if we want to teach students to think and act like real scientists and engineers today, we need to empower them with the opportunity to use state-of-the-art digital tools in addition to reading scientific texts, writing and discussing scientific arguments, and engaging in hands-on learning. So without the Chromebooks, it would virtually be a couple of kids sitting around a smartboard at the front of the room. This is much more engaging, and the conversations are remarkable that the students are having.
So I hope this gives you just a little taste of what's now going on in classrooms, because of the Chromebooks in the classroom, the network we built, and the variety of applications we've been able to provide students and teachers with. Great, great. Anybody have any questions, comments? Dave?
No, just really cool, you know, use of the applications. You know, I would never have thought of that. You know, you think of tracking, you know, sea life, but never tracking a water molecule. So that's a pretty cool way to be able to see how that, you know, water molecule moves in the atmosphere. That's neat. Glad to see these really unique programs, and, you know, I think really progressive programs being used.
I think I would have been a better science student a lot younger if we had had tools like this, because trying to be able to visualize what actually is happening. And I can see this being used to do experiments that they could never do in a classroom, because of the large scale they could do, or materials that we might not have, or things that might explode. So, you know, it's like, there's so many different applications you can see from a science standpoint in this, so great.
Yep.
I'd just like to say, great job, ladies, presenting. It does look very exciting, this new curriculum. Do you find that students are more engaged in the topics and/or learning it, getting it quicker, or...
I think initially, having taught science for many years, the kids wanted more hands-on, but the more conversations and the more opportunities you can model for them how science works in the real world, they've come to understand the importance of discourse, of argument, of reading from the experts and using what they know to move our knowledge forward. And they do love the simulations, and they're quite adept at using them.
Very good. Thank you for presenting tonight.
Great job, guys. I'm gonna have to talk to you later, because my oil and vinegar doesn't mix in my salad dressing. It's kinda like frustrating. I don't know what to do about it, but... Thanks a lot. You guys did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you. We always have our technology presentation in the month of February also, to give an example of the amount of funding that does go into technology for a school district. And as we get to the budget hearing at about 8 o'clock tonight, looking at supplies and consumables, and they really tell the story about why we make that commitment and spend the town's dollars that way to be able to have those experiences for students. Thank you. Okay. So the other parts of information from the superintendent are shorter, are some highlights for you that we're gonna talk through. There's no more presentations, but we're gonna talk through three other pieces here, also to give the preview of setting up for bringing it together halfway through the school year and getting ready for the budget presentation. So for mid-year accomplishments, with the school committee packet, you have the school improvement plans for each of our seven schools with changing from current status to mid-year accomplishments. You also have a plan that was put together through our work with the Essex County Learning Communities Grant that we have, which has moved from planning to now implementation. And you'll see that in the grant presentation also, that we have additional funding now to move forward with that. So all those pieces, and we had talked about that, the first six months of our strategic plan for the next five years was gonna be more fluid with figuring out where with the two pillars of social-emotional learning and student engagement, in that in every meeting, we're able to show you examples. So the strategic plan in action that our student reps describe and read to us from our seven schools, describe that on a monthly basis, and then the presentations that Mary coordinates in at our last month's meeting, having, I think, the most teachers present at one time with us, the number of people, teachers and administrators that have been involved with the grant, and now that is continuing. So some of the highlights, looking at the connections that we are focused with continuing our strong core with our curriculum, and then moving forward with student engagement and social-emotional learning. We have excellence in equity for all, really moving into as many ways as we can of stressing the "all" piece. And "all" will look different for students, but how are we reaching all of our students? So this commonality in our elementary mid-year accomplishments, you'll see their logic models, which we'll continue to give updates through each meeting. The work with the FAR cycle, which is really looking at that formative assessment of how do we look at what is being taught, how are students learning that, and making adjustments along the way through the formative assessments. And then really moving into the multi-tiered student support system, really looking at layers, they're called tiers, of instruction, and breaking down the silos between special education and regular education that we are, or general education, that we're moving together in that all of the adults, they're all of our students, and we're all working as a team in moving our students' learning forward. Some of the examples for student engagement you'll see there are our pathways, especially at the high school level, the Project Lead the Way. You'll see those connections with the Program of Studies tonight, and an additional grant for Project Lead the Way, our interdisciplinary courses, and then as the presentation in technology was just here with the elementary science and how engaging that is, so providing those resources for our students. For looking at social-emotional learning, we have Leading Together, which is continuing at our seven schools at the high school level, working with our new therapeutic learning center, and working with that entire program, K to 12, with our teachers and our students and families. We will have a social... We will have a social-emotional learning visioning committee, similar to the process last year with visioning for the entire district that led to our strategic plan and led to an education plan for the New Smith Elementary School, which we probably should have said earlier too, of thank you to town meeting for the vote that was last week to move the Smith School project also. We're working with a consultant, Jessica Minahan, who has presented to all teachers, aides, and now doing some specific consulting with two of our elementary schools for this school year, and we'll have her continue on with other schools as needed as a resource, looking at social-emotional learning with adults also, our youth mental health first aid. All of our teacher aides had that training before school started, so that was something that we have not done in the past, but to have that training, that every teacher aide had the same training, and there are many administrators that have had that training also. Our BCBA's, and Kat is here, Kat Berry, they have put together strategies in working with students and supporting them with their behaviors. So she has been working with Safety Care as one of our programs, and then also working with each school with this resource that Eric and she have created. Looking at some other programs of seeing what will be the right match for us, Zones of Regulations is another program, and working with trauma-sensitive schools, especially with our Smith Elementary School for the fall and moving now into the springtime. And then also looking at our elementary specialist schedules. Last year, all of the administrators working with a team of elementary teachers worked on an elementary schedule to really make sure that we were using our time most effectively, having time for science in there, looking at where's the reading, the writing, our math, all of those blocks, which led us to an opportunity to have a block for SEL with our specialists, which would be the PE, art, and music, and they have been in, I think that was one of the examples also through our report with our student rep this evening also. So that sort of gives you an overview of our mid-year accomplishments.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Eric?
I do, yeah. I, um, it's funny, the, well, looking at all the plans, first of all, you can tell people at the different schools, the schools are making progress to all of the goals. They may be at slightly different points, but you're all making progress, and it feels like things are happening. The real nugget I found was actually in the Essex County Learning Community document. And I was looking at Priority Challenge 1, which says, "Over the years, the Danvers Public Schools has found that we rely heavily on specialized teachers to intervene and work with students in diverse, with diverse learning needs outside the classroom. As a result, the district's academic achievement, as measured by MCAS, is just below the state average, with achievement gaps existing between those students, with and without diverse learning needs." It sounds to me like what you're saying is, when students need intervention, we have to rely on specialists to go in, and it would be better if the classroom teachers themselves were more capable of executing those, you know, basically identifying and working with those students? And can you just talk a little bit more about that and how that ties into the MCAS results?
Sure. Do you want to try, go first, Mary, or?
Sure, and I think this is the FAR cycle work that we've been talking about, that really is the work that we're zoning, you know, zeroing in on for the classroom teachers to work on making interventions. So the FAR cycle is that we give a formative assessment, we assess, we analyze the assessments, and then they, they take what they call firm action, and that's where the intervention can take place. The intervention could be remediation, but it can also be extension if someone is really is, has mastered the standard that we were testing and/or measuring, and push them forward. So we work together collaboratively to determine what those interventions are and, and work together to implement them. So that's a lot of the work we're doing at that, but we're also looking to see, how do we make that work? That would be like a tier one, how would that work tier two and three, where we actually do sometimes need to bring in the specialists, the specialized teachers to help us? But we're also working to get the specialized teachers into the classroom, so that the intervention happens in the classroom with children there, instead of pulling them out and missing core instruction that's happening in the classroom.
Okay.
So this is all of, we're striving to work on and getting more an efficient model for that to happen.
Okay. I bring it up because it's a very specific, you've identified a very specific problem in trying to craft solutions for it, which I think speaks well of really how granular you're getting in terms of what's going on, but I found that an interesting point in that one particular document, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
I guess I'm just curious, are there any goals that we're concerned that we're not gonna be able to make based on the mid-year accomplishments? We've always said in the past that, you know, we want to set goals that are aggressive, but not goals that are so far out of reach that you can't make them. So is there a feeling for any of the, you know, without having to go through each school individually, if there are any goals that maybe something's changed and we might not be able to make it, and we need to adjust it mid-year?
Looking at Mary, which is with the logic models and the principles, I don't believe so, and if, maybe ask Mary to describe the data meetings, so how we worked toward the logic models and looking at student data. Is it not specifically around the student learning, but as we look at social-emotional learning, there may be some things that we said in the timeframe that we thought we were going to do that will look different by the end of the school year from what we've learned from working on the grant together. So we thought we might have gone further with making a decision, and we're not at that point at the moment, but, so we'll be adjusting some timeframes for implementation of the social-emotional learning, but I don't believe with our student.
But it's too soon to make those adjustments at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And we're, we're working right now to be, to think about, like, are we on track for the math one, where 75% of students will meet the benchmark identified on common assessments at the end of each investigations unit? So I think we have some data on the earlier units, and I think, depending on the grade level, you know, a grade, there's, you know, six grade levels, and there's about eight units for each grade level, so there's lots of data. But if you'd like us to share, like, our preliminary mid-year data on that, we could do that at another meeting.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we were setting ourselves up for success, but not, again, not setting up, so it's a slam dunk easy thing on every measurement.
Right. If you aggregate, we are meeting that benchmark, some, some grade levels are like a little lower than 75%, but then some are above 75%, so.
Great, thank you.
Mary Beth?
I'm all set.
Okay. All right, great, thanks. We'll go on to grants.
Thank you. We're gonna move to Mr. Shaverna.
So we have your yearly grants update. We're happy to report that we have four new grants this year. So we have our State Turnaround Assistance Grant that we've talked about to help address MCAS scores at the middle school, Project Lead the Way, which is really, as we talk about the budget, the student engagement piece, that's a big piece of what we're doing. We have a new DFC grant, which is our Drug-Free Communities, which is linked to Danvers Cares, and as we finished our 10 years with their core grant, we've moved to their next program, which is a three-year grant at $50,000 a year called CARA, and it's about recovering from addiction, so a continuation of that work, as well as the ECLC grant that we've talked to you about over the course of the fall. So four new grants totaling $106,000. Our overall grant funding is down by about $40,000, but again, that's tied to that DFC grant switching from $125,000 a year to $50,000 a year. Just a little bit more detail, our entitlement grants, as we've looked at the change in the federal, at the federal level in the government, we've seen a decrease in our Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV, which is around PD and tutoring for economically disadvantaged, so we've seen a decrease in those grants, and a slight increase in our IDEA special education grants. The grants that were discontinued from the previous year are our Self-Signaling Grant, which was a grant that we received a number of years ago that we just finished spending the funding in the last fiscal year, our small grant program through the Tower Foundation, which has developed into, is it the precursor to the ECLC grant? North Shore Community Health Network Grant, that was to do some mental health first aid training, that was a one-time grant, as well as we received a one-time payment for students coming from Puerto Rico based on the hurricane last year to help offset some of the expenses with the few students that we had received from that program.
Any questions?
I just have one. The Turnaround Assistance Grant, it's only $10,000, which obviously is not a lot of money, and this is an issue that we had a lot of conversation about several meetings ago. So what are we gonna do with, you know, $10,000? How are we gonna put that grant money to use?
Mary can talk in detail, but it'll help us with some teacher planning time and providing stipends, too.
So again, in honoring the work that we've been doing, the district around the formative assessment and making the interventions happen in the classroom, we decided that with the $10,000, what we would do is train more teachers, teachers at the middle school around how to work through that cycle. Right now, we've trained the department heads or the head teacher leaders, so that's seven teachers that we've trained, but we're looking to increase the capacity so that every group has like an expert facilitator of that FAR cycle, so they can really work through that and have some knowledge base. So we're working with Nancy Love, and she's gonna come in and do some training with those facilitators, so we're really kind of looking at developing that teacher leadership part of it.
And we have the freedom with that grant to spend it kind of how we think is best, as opposed to the state requiring us to spend it in a certain way?
Right. No, they, they said, you know, for what's best, this phase of the grant is, is planning, but we've, because of the strategic plan and our Essex County Learning Community grants, we've been doing lots of planning around that, so we felt like we were pretty good with looking at our data and figuring out, you know, what our, our next steps were gonna be, so we decided that we would just start to implement and try to get that teacher leadership. Again, you don't want to layer initiative on top of initiative on top of initiative, so we feel like that, that if we really monitor student understanding of concepts in the classroom with formative assessments, that that's what's gonna help us get bang for our buck.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Good?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Facilities?
So since our last meeting, we did have our town-wide community forum on Saturday, the 26th, for the Smith Building Project, which was fairly well-attended, very informational, I think, for town meeting members that led into our vote for funding for the project. So we'd like to thank the community for their support, I think overwhelming support for the project, and we look forward to moving on to the next steps. So we're already jumping right into it, so we have three or four additional meetings already scheduled in the upcoming weeks. We have our next submission to MSBA due at the end of February, so we have another school building committee meeting scheduled for next Friday. So we are hitting the ground running now with the next phase to really gear up to hopefully do some early site work this summer. And then for our Highland School Roof Project that we're working with, MSBA on, we are going for our project funding agreement vote for that project on Wednesday. So we're excited that hopefully that gets approved at their meeting, and that we'll move forward to putting a new roof on the school this summer, if everything goes according to plan. So lots of exciting things happening in the school building world.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody, any questions?
I just would like to thank and compliment the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager in terms of the meetings they had to get information out, you know, beyond even just the workshop. They really, I think, worked very hard to make sure all sorts of information about the project has been available to the community, and I feel like that helped move that project through.
And I, and I, it seemed to me from town meeting that pretty much everybody there had a real good handle on what was going on, which was great. And, and as Keith mentioned, overwhelming support at town meeting for the project, so that's great. And we move forward. All right. So I guess we're at the budget portion of the meeting. So before we do the budget portion of the meeting, let's take a couple-minute break.
Sure.
Move on to the public hearing for the Danvers Public Schools 2019-2020 budget.
Yes, FY20 already. Thank you. We're looking forward to sharing the work through our work with our teachers, our administrators, our town, in preparing the FY20 draft budget for our school committee to review. At the beginning, I'll do the overview pieces, setting the context, and then be able to have Keith and work through the numbers with you, and we'll work as a team with that. So looking at our annual budget process, we begin with building the budget, which always goes back to our priorities of our strategic plan, reviewing all our programs and accounts, looking back at FY19, identifying our FY20 needs, looking at historical perspective, the budget proposal, and then we'll finish with our questions and discussion as the public hearing. Okay, looking at the process, we began this process really in December, and we started about a month early this year with having all the coordination with the town and looking at having everything in place to be able to have the budget hearing a little bit earlier in our process here. Again, the formal vote for the school committee and sharing this with the public does not come until the March come until the March meeting, so it gives everyone an opportunity where the school committee does it all together as all five of you, and then gives a month for any input, and then coming back at the March meeting. And we also have the Board of Selectmen have their budget by town charter at the beginning of March, and it is looking like March 9th would be the day that the, that Saturday that the Board of Selectmen will do the overview of the town's initial draft budget. So we have worked with our administrators since December through January and February to present here tonight. After tonight and the March vote at the school committee, we will then go to FinCom meetings in April with our annual town meeting on May 20th this year. The fiscal year begins as always July 1st, and the first day of school for the 2019-2020 school year begins on September 4th when we really begin to implement it with our students and our faculty. Our strategic plan, as our guiding statement for where we want our district to move forward with, is looking at that we are dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence, and in seeing that in many different ways through the student engagement, the social emotional learning, along with our academic learning. Our core values of caring, quality, commitment, and collaboration were all part of putting this budget together. In 2023, five years, we chunk it off in five-year segments, we're looking at it, these are really for the most part, they're the same as we had in the last five years, that we still have work to do toward them, and we want the four major areas here. That the Danvers Public Schools is an inclusive community of learners. You saw that through their mid-year accomplishments. We have a welcoming environment for students and their families, which is evident in that our, that diversity is valued and celebrated, that all of our students are fully engaged and invested in their learning, one now pillar of our strategic plan on student engagement, and that students are skilled communicators and problem solvers, engaged in collaborative inquiry, making effective use of technology, and applying their learning in authentic, real-life situations. And we saw that in our two presentations today with our faculty and our students. So building the budget with the focus on our new strategic plan and moving our district forward, looking at the student engagement and the social emotional learning, you'll see the pieces with the resources, and then the pieces around professional development. Much of that is we're being able to do through our grant work and supported through grants. And then looking at that, the core theories and our strategic objectives, having a safe and supportive learning environment for all of our students, and that is where the social emotional piece comes in. We have a coherent curriculum and instruction supporting that through our budget, and that our students are engaged, that they have meaningful, engaging learning experiences that allow for student choice and their student voice to be heard. And I think you saw that with some of the writing too, that it's not, here's one topic that we're reading about or one thing that you have to write about, but students have choice when they're working on their reading and their writing. And then we go through the process, through much of what we do around strategic planning and the work in a school system. We do self-assessments first, we assess where we are, we analyze that, set our goals, put our plans together, we implement. We then look at mid-year, which we did here this evening, a summit evaluation. So all the pieces that we look at around a cycle of strategic planning in a school can be set with our school budget also. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Tverner to take us through the FY20 budget.
So as we do each year, we have a collaborative process with our town partners. So with the town finance director, the town manager, the assistant town manager, and the library director, we come together to look at what the overall town budget picture is, to come to what our conclusion could be what works for funding for everybody. So this year, we continue to look at areas that are challenges for the town, including retirement funding. So this is for our non-MTRS employees. So MTRS is funded more through a statewide initiative, but our local employees in that retirement system, there was an actuarial study done to be fully funded by the early 2030s. So each year, we see increases to fund that line. Health insurance, each year, we see increasing premiums. And again, if we look at things in terms of Proposition Two and a Half, our health insurance premiums often either double, triple, quadruple that two and a half percent. That is an area we continue to watch, as well as the Smith School project. So we're happy that the town supported that. And with the increasing rate environment that we have, we are looking at bringing funding for the debt for that project online in this upcoming fiscal year. So we saw a large increase in that line to work in concert with the school construction stabilization line, but enabled to fund that project. Each year, we do an assessment of all of our accounts, so we really look at it from the base up. So we look at what our student needs and staffings are, what our enrollments are, special education, contractual obligations. We always make sure we have a focus on our strategic priorities. So as we said, student engagement and social emotional learning, and you'll see those as the themes as we continue through our presentation. We look to preserve the solid foundation that we've built over the years and focus on programmatic needs and how we supplement those needs to take our next steps forward as a district. As we look at what those contractual obligations are, we have three main unions that come out of our operating budget, our teachers, our aides, and our administrative assistants. As you can see, they each have steps built into their contract and their salary schedules as well as cost of living adjustments. We also have our food service employees, but those are funded through our enterprise funds and operate slightly different. We also have our non-union staff, which do not have steps, but we do look to provide cost of living adjustments to be based on their performance evaluations each year. So as we look at what the needs are for FY20 specifically, we do look at primarily funding our contractual obligations. So as we look at the numbers and we dig in, you'll see that our increased percentage and dollar amount asked for really does fund just those contractual obligations, and then we look to fund our other needs through savings that we have from retirements. So contractual obligations are the personnel that we just reviewed, as well as transportation. So we have contracts for our big yellow school buses, I like to call them the big yellow buses, the big yellow school bus contract that's tied to inflation. So we do see an increase in that for next year. As we continue to look at our enrollment growth that we've reviewed as we've looked at the Smith School project, we do see that there's a need for an additional first grade teacher at the Smith School. So this year, we have three kindergarten classrooms there. For next year, we'll need three first grade classrooms as that population continues through the system, and then being able to maintain the three kindergarten for the Smith School for next year at the kindergarten level. For preschool, as we continue to see growth in those younger learners, we do see the need to add a session of preschool in the fall. This is actually something that we've had to do mid-year this year that we're funding through tuitions. So you'll see an increase of a .5 teacher and a .5 speech pathologist. Both of those will be funded through alternative revenue. So in the preschool program, we have peer partners, and we have special education students. So peer partners are tuition-paying students, so those salaries will be funded through those tuitions. You will also see a 1.0 aid increase so that we can have an aid in that program. As we continue to look at our social emotional learning, as we talk about that area, we do see an increase of a .5 social worker at the middle school. So this year, we were able to take, one of our social workers was at the high school and have them split time between the middle school and high school. But for next year, we really see that we have a full-time need at both levels. So the person will return and will increase by a half-time social worker at the middle school, and that way, we can increase our services to students. You'll see a restructuring of service delivery at the high school and the special education department. So currently, we have two teacher aides and one interventionist that service students. And instead of that model for next year, we'll be looking at having 1.4 special education teachers, so we can reduce the class sizes and some of the academic interventions, so we can reduce the need for the aides. And by restructuring, it's budget neutral, but we're able to, we think, better service students. Then as we look at student engagement and we look at our curricular needs, you'll see large, larger increases in textbooks and supplies. And again, that's around our middle school civics as we introduce that, as well as our elementary science program and high school project Lead the Way. So as we look at increasing student engagement in the sciences, these programs require more materials, they require more hands-on materials, so there is an increased cost with that. In the FY19 budget process, when we approved the budget that we're working in, now we decided to pre-purchase science textbooks to help us balance the FY19 need. So we almost were artificially lower in science supplies and textbooks for FY19. So in FY20, to continue those programs and fund the consumables, you'll see those increases come in. So as we said, each year, we really look to review all line items, that it is, if you needed something in FY19, doesn't mean that you needed in FY20. So we ask administrators to really review that each year. We look at all our personnel structures. We just talked a little bit about restructuring, so how can we do more with what our existing resources are? We assess all of our non-salary and textbook and curriculum needs. We assess our transportation and other contracts, looking for savings or how we could do things differently. We do factor all of our known retirements into the budget. We review all of our fees and apply for grants. As you can see, we did receive a few new grants this year to really make the most of that we can. So when we set the budget now in February and we have our vote in March, there is lots of things that change between now and September when we start the new year. So each fall, we give you a budget transfer report that accounts for some of those changes, and those include enrollments. So again, one area that we keep looking at is preschool, as we see that growing, special education, tuition out and transportation. We continue to monitor those lines, which is a yearly piece, any changing student needs that we have, state and federal funding, and then any possible litigation that could come. Our FY19 tax-supported budget appropriation is $41,94,000. This year, as we currently go through this, we continue to look at aides, special education placements, technology staffing, and non-salary and other curricular needs. So kind of similar to what those impacts could be for next year's budget, we continue to monitor in this year. For FY20, our identified needs or our contractual obligations are almost $1.3 million. Those staffing changes, which net out to be 1.0 FTE additional over last year, total $118,000, so it's a little bit more than one position as we look at some of those restructurings, but net, we're only up 1.0 FTE over where we are in FY19. We see retirement savings of $246,000 for next year. Special education, we actually see a reduction of $105,000. So as we look at students aging out of our system, using our circuit breaker funds for our unknown placement. So in some years, we're able to put in a few contingency placements into our budget, and other years, it doesn't fit. So this is one of those years where that doesn't fit into what our tax-supported budget is, but we are able to, you know, account for those in our circuit breaker reserve. So just as a reminder, our circuit breaker is funds that we receive in FY19 that we receive now, we can spend in FY20 or FY21. So we're in position where we're able to carry a full year's worth of revenue to give us that flexibility should we have students who move into the district that are unanticipated to account for them in that line and then fund them in the following budget year. Other non-salaries, as we talked about, science consumables and civics, total 143, and then that transportation contract is up by 19,000. So as you can see, when we really look at our staffing changes, plus our non-salary items, we really are just about at that number of retirement savings, which is what we do most years when we can, and then the increase that we're looking for is to fund the contractual obligations. As we look at our multi-year budget needs, so each year, we ask administrators to submit what their two-year outlook is for upcoming needs. So one of the things we were able to build in this year is, as part of our readers' workshop at the elementary level, it comes with a recommended classroom library text. So we were able to put some of those into, into this year to get a set for, I believe, K and one. So as we go into next year, we'll be looking at rolling that into grades two through five to really have a robust classroom libraries at each school, so that way, students really have those books at their fingertips. We'll be looking at the expansion of Project Lead the Way and that hands-on science at both the high school and the middle school, continued exploration, adoption, and renewal of textbook subscriptions, digital apps and software to support curricular adoptions. Many of these online textbooks come with three-year licenses. So in FY21, we'll be looking at having to renew our license for middle school math. It is an expensive license that was purchased three years ago, so that you will see coming up next year as a possible increase to our textbook line. Monitoring of our enrollment growth, as we've been doing year over year, and then our continued collaboration with DPW as we look at the maintenance of our buildings and replacing carpets and VCT tiles, and also including school roofs like we're doing with Highlands. Sometime in the near future, we'll be starting to look at the Riverside School and the need for a roof on that building. This is a slide that shows, if I change both screens, this is a slide that shows the allocation of our school budget costs. It's just about the same as last year. You might see one percentage change or not. We continue, most of our budget goes to salaries, so 83% of the money that we spent goes to salaries, 11% to special education, so that gets up to 94% of our budget that is somewhat on fixed costs. And then the remainder is where we have the flexibility to buy supplies and materials. So much of what we do is driven based on people, and this chart is just one way to show that. Our per pupil cost, so this is FY16 and FY17. The data that we submitted for FY18 has still not been released by DESI to see how we are doing in comparison to the state, but you can see we remain slightly below what the state average is for per pupil spending. This again is a combination of the money that we spend directly out of the school committee appropriation, as well as money that's spent on the maintenance of buildings on the town side. Those both get reported to DESI through one report and roll up to be what this number is. So this is kind of our all-inclusive number that they do to compare apples to apples, district to district. Our state aid funding, as you can see, we're down slightly from where we were last year. Last year, we were receiving 16.9% of our funding. Next year, we'll be at 16.6. Again, we have seen over the recent years, increases in Chapter 70. Those increases have been less than 2% on average, so it has not been keeping up with what our overall budget increases are. We have seen larger increases in general government aid, so the governor kind of put more resources into that, which we're thankful for here in Danvers, that it all goes into the same pot, and then we really look at overall needs together. This is our average increases over the last 10 years, so over the life of our last two strategic plans. So as you can see, our 10-year average is 3.12. This remains roughly the same as what our 10-year average was last year when we looked at it, as we continue to move forward. And then if you look at our FY20, the total budget request is $42,317,094, a $1.2 million increase, representing a 2.98%. And then, any questions that you may have?
Okay, Dave, you want to start?
Sure. I have a few questions. You had talked about, you know, unknowns, and one of them being preschool enrollment. Are we capped at preschool in terms of, you know, based on space and teacher, or are we legally required to provide preschool for special education students?
So that's a kind of complicated question, but not too complicated.
Okay, let's go for the not-too-complicated answer.
Students that are under the age of five, there's, there's a combination of services they could receive, so they could be eligible for just speech or just OTPT and come in to get those services, or they could qualify based on early intervention and based on what would be an IEP to come to school for typically what's a half-day program with us. So we are constrained on space in all of our schools. We are at the brink this year, and we looked at adding that classroom mid-year. We're looking at where we can introduce co-teaching models to help leverage space, so where we would have two professionally licensed educators with three or four aides in a classroom. Our typical preschool classroom size is about 15 students. So in these classrooms, we will go up to more in the 25-student range that we would have in some of our kindergarten classrooms, just with additional staff based on the age and the needs of the students.
But it would always be proportionate based on special education students versus traditional education students, so it's kind of self-funding?
So the hope is to be on a one-to-one basic model. That's the hope. It is not self-sustaining. So we do collect tuitions that help offset some of those class, but it is not self-sustaining, there is a portion of it funded out of the operating budget. The increase for next year will be self-sustained, just that increase for the halftime classroom.
And do we know where we fit in terms of preschool pricing for traditional students versus other programs that are out there?
So we do, we do a yearly review of where our program stands as compared to other public school programs, and we're slightly public school programs. And we're slightly on the lower end of what that pricing is in comparison to private preschools. I think we're one heck of a value.
So is that something we should be looking at, increasing?
So it is something that, yeah, it is something that we continually review. So we'll look at that again for next year.
I think as we look at the enrollments also, of knowing that there's kindergarten students coming, that's where our growth is, that would have an impact on preschool. So we were with Mary Tatum this afternoon in thinking about, we really do have to take some time and look at all of the preschool programs and making sure as we go forward that we have a solid plan.
Great. My next question is about Project Lead the Way. You know, all those programs are awesome. Is that all grant funding or portion grant funding, or how does that work?
So typically, when we add a new course, it's been grant-funded to add the new course. And then, as we have those courses, we add the sustainability portion into our operating budget.
So it just gets folded in, but as those classes are added, other classes are likely going away?
Typically, we would see a refinement in our, right, in our, in our science program of studies.
Okay. And then, I don't even know if this is the right time to talk about this in terms of the budget, but have we, are we looking more, what I'm hearing more and more is concern about behavior, kids' behaviors in school. And I know we're working on SEL, and that's great, but, you know, we also have to think about the overall classroom and the many kids that are affected by the behavior of a couple in a classroom. So are we looking at behavior specialists or specialized classrooms to help, you know, those students that need, you know, that special, you know, specialized teaching? Because it's, I'm hearing it as a growing problem, not only in Danvers, but everywhere. So I'm concerned that we're sacrificing lots of kids in a classroom for the sake of a couple.
So we do have the programs and continue to look at it. We have two BCBAs that work throughout our district. And Mr. Thompson, as you said, I think as I speak with other superintendents, or if our principals speak with other principals, this is something that we are seeing. And I think we put it under the umbrella of social emotional learning. And then, as Mary Worms said, she had, looking at the tiers. So there's pieces about our common language around our expectations for students, that's the culture that we in place. And then you continue moving up the tiers of the three tiers, and then students that need additional support with having support within the classroom or having a specialized program. And then working with families to look at what resources are the most appropriate. So some of them maybe have been a little bit faster than what we expected as we put our plan together. So it feels like some reaction, but we are trying to be proactive in utilizing the programs that we have and making sure that they're fully staffed and have the resources through our BCBAs, along with all of our faculty being, having the training that they need through trauma-informed schools, looking at our open circle program that we have, and then just overall looking at having a common language for SEL.
I just want to make sure it's something that we're staying really close to, because we can't be expecting our teachers to be managing classroom, you know, or teaching while they're focused on managing classrooms and disruptions and all of that. So I just want to make sure we're staying on top of that and hopefully being a district that's leading the way in solving that problem that seems to be growing and growing.
Thank you. And that is a major piece. The behaviors are one part of why we probably say SEL more, because there is more to it. The behaviors may be more obvious, but it's all part of the plan under a social emotional learning. Thank you.
And then just my final question is, and I probably ask this every year, are we okay in terms of bandwidth with technology? You know, do we have enough whatever stuff we need?
We have more.
Look at the data sheet I gave you.
Yep.
It'll show the amount of bandwidth that we're actually using, and we're at peak times, we have about two gigas of bandwidth at any moment. At peak times for ANCAT, we use about one-twenty-seven-five, that means about twenty-five percent of the buffer just in case. So we never hit close to that.
Okay. So you're comfortable with that?
So I think what we continue to look at is then, how do we create learning environments where the wireless is really everywhere? So like Jeff and I had a conversation today about how do we look to continue to increase it in the hallways and into some of the common spaces? That is, we have students working and collaborating in smaller groups, and we start to look at non-traditional spaces to be areas where they can work together. We need to make sure that we have wireless that covers those areas as well.
Right. That's the kind of thing I was talking about.
Yeah. So that'll be our next step, is to look at how we supplement what our existing wireless structure is.
Great. Thank you.
I'm kind of sorry Jeff wasn't here to hear that.
I asked extra questions just for Jeff. Absence.
Thank you. Eric?
Okay. Some of the, first of all, the overall budget for the, really, at least the second year in a row, it's, it's not exactly bare bones in the sense that we can't do what we need to do, but there's certainly no bells and whistles in here. There's nothing particularly major in terms of, hey, we're going to try this. We're adding three administrators. We're doing X, Y, and Z. It looks like there's a full-time equivalent, I think as you said of, you know, one-point-oh. We're paying the salaries. We're doing a little bit with supplies, basically. And other than that, keeping up with special ed, keeping up with transportation. So it seems like I face a very responsible budget. Number of the questions I'm going to ask, I ask them because I think others will, and I'm certainly curious, and others are probably going to ask the questions. So page C three. You can probably guess. I'm looking at the, on the top chart, it says Math Coach one-point-oh last year, one-point-oh this year, zero change. FY nineteen operating budget on the second chart is zero for last year and ninety-three-thousand-sixty-five for this year. If we had one last year, why is there nothing in the budget? I'm curious as to how that plays out.
So it's just where that salary was in, for dollar value, was in the wrong category for last year?
Okay.
So that teacher was seated within a school, so we moved the money from the school into its own line to really separate out that that...
So that's really a technical change and nothing more. Okay. Thank you. So at the middle school, we're going to add half a social worker. No issue with that at all. I think it makes sense. Your explanation is, and justification is, I think, fine in the packet. And as you mentioned, Dave, you know, there are many more challenges every year in terms of the, so obviously, that makes sense. At the high school, there's a change of increasing a social worker by point-five and decreasing a guidance counselor point-five. Does that relate to the use of the therapeutic learning center?
So that's more, again, just looking at changing student needs. We do have a retirement in the guidance department. So working with the high school administration is that we've seen a shift of what students' needs are from what would be a traditional guidance role to needing additional support with the, the social worker. So when that halftime social worker went to the middle school this year, we've been okay at the high school, and we've made it through in providing services to the therapeutic learning center, but it's really about coming back and making that whole to where it was at the FY eighteen.
Okay. And caseload, if you want to call it, that will be distributed among the other guidance professionals, and they're fine with that. Okay. Now, also talked about some change in team leader positions in order to accommodate a team process in the tenth grade. Can you speak to that a little bit? Because that's kind of a change in the way we're going to operate the tenth grade.
So that's a model that we've seen very successful at the ninth grade level. So as we transition from the middle school model, which really has students spending their entire day in teams, to the high school, it still gives that ninth grade team an opportunity to get to know their students and really know them in-depthly to help with that transition. So we see if we can push that model up to tenth grade, as we look at the social emotional needs of children, and really making sure nobody falls through the cracks, and we continue to push them to be successful. If we're able to have that model in tenth grade, as they start to get into more electives and really spend more of their time out and about in the school, if we can have that model, we think we'll be successful, more successful with students.
Okay. And if I read the justification, it sounds, the information you provided, it sounds like it will look different than teams at the ninth grade level. I think you had contemplated three teachers, perhaps, or three disciplines being included in the team, and so that won't impact electives.
Correct. They'll still get to go into all of their electives, but allow that oversight still.
Okay. Let's see. Special education, the high school. So I think, and you may have mentioned this, and you may want to speak to it a little more, or maybe Mary can, but you're talking about basically moving a little bit further away from the AIDS and sort of increasing more co-taught. Am I reading that correctly? Okay. Where do you think we'll get the bang for the buck, so to speak?
So, and Jason, do you want to speak?
Do you want to, do you want to come up? Sorry. Just...
Tom gets to see you tonight, Jason.
Tom gets to see you.
So it's a combination of being able to keep the academic support classes at a reasonable number, because so by state law and just by, you know, common sense and good professional judgment, there's certain numbers of instructional assistance you need for the size of academic support classes. So by increasing the special ed positions, we'd be able to have academic supports that are eight students or less, which wouldn't require as much instructional support staff or aides in the classrooms. We'd have smaller classes for those targeted interventions, and would also allow for an increase in co-talk classes as well. And that's related to, you need at least a fifty-fifty ratio for co-talk classes. So in terms of students with an IEP or who receive services and general ed students. So sometimes, by default, if we have twelve students, for example, with an IEP in a co-talk class, that class size has to be at least twenty-four. So increasing special ed and co-tots, we'll be able to hopefully, with the schedule, being really purposeful about the schedule, to get co-talk classes in line with other general ed classes and keep the class sizes reasonable, like to work on improving that.
Okay. Good. Thank you. That was enough.
Okay.
Uh, page C twenty. I was just looking at the, the year tuition offset. Do we expect a slight drop, maybe one less outplacement, if I'm reading that right?
So that's actually with the, that's actually the addition of the point-five speech pathologist and the point-five teacher. So it's actually saying we're going to be funding additional salaries from those tuitions.
Okay. And I have one more question before I'll pass it on, Mr. Chairman, if I could. I noticed on the outplacement list, one of the things we see is the recovery high school. And I'm curious, I assume the tuition is, is sort of a, a flat fee for a student that we send to the recovery high school? Just curious as to what the charge is on an annual basis per student, give or take?
So it's about fourteen-thousand, fifteen-thousand, or maybe it's not four, or maybe you're...
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. I may have some others, but I want to pass it to Mary Beth.
Thanks, Eric. Mary Beth?
Well, Eric asked some of my questions, but I did have, back to the point-five social worker at the middle school. So that's just adding a halftime social worker. Is that correct? Right? We're just adding a halftime.
Yes.
It's not adding...
So that we already have that? So this year?
That's what I, clarification, we have someone from the high school that goes there half-time right now, right?
Yes.
But you want to add halftime to make that position full-time, and that others, the social worker that's here would come back here for full-time?
Yeah, whatever that personnel looks like. Yes. And then we would have full-time at both the middle school and the high school for next year.
So then ultimately, there'll be two full-time social workers at the middle school?
Yes. Plus our, the Leahy Health.
The Leahy Health.
Which is like a part, the South Counselor.
Right. Okay. No, good. Thank you. That was just clarification. No other questions. Eric did ask what I had, so.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, there's not, there's not really a lot of questions. First of all, the presentation was, was good. And Keith, I think that you answered a lot of questions during the course of the presentation, so that was helpful. Eric and Dave really asked the questions that are out there. But, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, the, the increase is seventy-thousand dollars. I think the budget request is seventy-thousand dollars less than the salaries, the contractual obligation. So, I mean, you know, certainly, there's, there's no, as you say, Eric, there's no bells and whistles in here. The only, and ninety-four percent of the budget is, again, salaries and special ed. So, I mean, there's not really anything that you can do about that. That's, that's there, and it's got to be dealt with, and that's what makes us good at what we do. So I guess I would ask, and I think I ask this some years and other years I don't, I mean, is there anything like major that, that you're, you're missing this year because of what we have for the budget? Is there anything that, you know, like, we really should have, we really needed money for this or that? Anything?
Isn't anything major? The piece is where we have a multi-year approach. So the requests that come in, we really do look at the needs and our administrators and working with our teachers, give us all of those needs. And then, yes, we do have to do some negotiating around what is the priority need that we have. So I feel like this budget hits those priorities. And then, we look and forecast out over multiple years of, for example, we looked at the elementary classroom libraries. Would we have liked to have gotten all of them in one year? We would have, but knowing that we could split that out over a two-year period, then we'll be able to do that, pieces of it. So that's what, I believe it hits all of our priorities. And the needs, we know what the needs are, and we'll look at them over a multi-year process.
Okay.
Really thanking the, the district team for coming together and really looking at how can we restructure what our existing base is to really meet some of those needs. So with Jason looking at, okay, well, if I, you know, restructured this and eliminated these three positions and added this one-point-four, I feel like we would make it further. So the team really came together to look at how we leverage our existing resources to make sure that we're still making progress and that we're not just staying complacent.
Yeah. I don't really have anything else. Does Eric, anything else?
Well, it's, it's, no, no, not in terms of questions. I think it's always a balance between trying to be fiscally responsible and still deliver the product. And I sense that, as I'm looking at this, there's an effort to be more efficient in some areas to make sure we can do things for the least cost reasonable. And we have to be honest that with the Smith School coming online, some of that, you know, that debt's going to be a factor in the town budget, and we have to deal with that. So just maintain the balance overall so that the students are still getting the services, particularly special education. And I think the rearranging of things sounds like it makes sense, but if the students really aren't getting what they need, then it's not worth saving the money, because we'll be paying in a different way in the long run. I don't see that happening here. I know none of you want that to happen here, but that's always should be first in our mind. But I look at this budget, it is as responsible as it can be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I agree. I mean, we're certainly fiscally responsible. That's, and that's why I wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't sacrificing anything in that regard. But, and it also should be mentioned that this is a collaborative process with the town. And I'm assuming that when, in those discussions with the town, you've had, you've been doing it forever, but they're, they're fair and reasonable when they're dealing with us, too. So if you...
It really is that we do, and Keith had said that in the presentation also, is we look at, as a town, we look at all of our needs. So we can go honestly into those meetings and say, here are what our needs are as a district for the children, and then we're hearing from the library, we're hearing from our town manager and the finance director as to what the needs are for the town. And then we bring that all together and put a budget together for this town.
And if there was something that you really needed, you know, that, you'd make sure that that was part of those discussions, too. So, so I think, you know, in that way, I think we're doing what we need to do. Any other, anything else from the board? Okay. So it is a public hearing. I don't see any public though. Is there any public out there? So I guess there's no comments from the public. So I guess we'll just, we'll vote on this in March?
Yes. If people, if anyone has any questions along the way, we're here to answer those questions through the March meeting.
Yeah, between now and then, if anybody wants to contact us or the administration, that's, that's the time to do it.
Yeah. We encourage town meeting members or others to reach out if you do have questions. All right?
Okay. Well, then, this, the, the public hearing is at an end, and we'll go back to the regular agenda.
And again, I would like to thank everyone. We have our administrators that are here throughout the budget process, the support of our school committee, and the overall support in Danvers for education is much appreciated.
All right. Unfinished business.
Thank you. We have our Holden Richmond Program of Studies, and this is for a second reading. The superintendent recommends the Holden Richmond Middle School Program of Studies for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have our Danvers...
And there was a little bit of an adjustment here.
Yes.
Or not a little bit of adjustment, but a couple of added classes. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Should we?
Tell the public what they are.
Jason, yeah, maybe.
Do we want to? Jason, do you want to tell us what the?
Sure. Thank you.
Have to sit closer to the podium next time.
Sit closer to the microphone.
We need one of those roving mics.
So it was really related, the timing was with grant funding. So like we talked before, it's two separate grants, one to start a computer science pathway. So that's funding for professional development and durable equipment for three different courses. So there's an intro or an essentials course that we're going to tie into. The thought is to initial thing is to tie into our existing like computer apps curriculum that we have at the high school and to continue to enhance that. And as well as training for AP computer science and also a course called cybersecurity, which is, I think, going to be fun. And then the second grant was to expand our engineering project lead the way courses. And we're planning on adding a course on environmental sustainability. And that will be in addition to, I feel like that's a really good pair with the AP environmental studies that we'll be adding next year as well.
Great. Thanks. Some interesting choices.
I think the cybersecurity thing sounds awesome. It's such a hot field right now that to be able to get kids into it early to see if they might want to explore it in college is great.
Any other questions, comments? We good? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
All right. New business policy.
Thank you. We continue, we're actually out onto our last four sections of the MASC overhaul of policies. So for this month, the superintendent has recommended the approval of the review of sections I and J as per the MASC request for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any, any discussion? Really, I should, there's really nothing substantive that's really changed there, correct?
Right. Most of it is the wording changes and they should be updated with current laws.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have for our attendance area policies, we've been speaking about this at our Smith School building meetings with the community of looking at attendance areas and flex zones. In reviewing the policy, and we met with our policy subcommittee on Friday, we really see that it doesn't change the policy. The policy is the bigger picture pieces of it, but it does change some procedures. So tonight, I'm going to ask Keith Serrano to present the overview of some revised procedures.
So as Dr. Dana said, as we look at why changes to our procedures, we see an increasing school enrollment townwide. As we said, when we went to do our Smith School building project, we had actually gone and said we want to build a school roughly the same size, more square feet so that we can do education, but they said, actually, you want to think about building it for a bigger school. So as we started to look at what that enrollment growth looked like, they actually presented us with the idea of why don't you look at flex zones? So we started to dig into it as we've gone through this building project process, and we'd like to thank our architect, Hape, who's been able to really give us a dynamic GIS mapping system so that way when we look at births across town for the next five years, we really have an idea of where some of those students are coming from. But we want to make sure that really we're looking at flexibility to meet those shifting student populations, both now and the next five years, but as well as hopefully over the next 10 or 15 years. So as that population shifts, we're not looking to continually what might have been done in the past, which would be redistricting. So we're really looking at how can we do it in an innovative, new way that's really with sound practices. So, and we are looking at continuity of education for children throughout their whole K to five career. So the changes that we're making will only be made to incoming kindergarten students. So if you're in second or third grade, we're not going to be saying you were going to Riverside and now you're going to a new school. It's going to be no. If you're an incoming kindergarten student, this is where you're going to go. Looking at geographically local schools, the students residences, so we've heard a little bit about, well, if I live in Riverside, are you going to be sending my kid across town to the Smith School? So that's not our intention. It's really looking at what areas of flexibility do we have between the existing school zones to allow us that flexibility, but still keep kids in schools that are geographically close. This will help allow us to have the program equity across all five elementary schools. So we've talked a lot about STEM and STEAM and makerspaces and looking at having those number of classrooms. So really looking to have that type of program equity, but as well as to have a similar classroom experience. So every year, we talk about how Highlands kindergarten might have 22 and 22, 22 in all of their classrooms, and then we have Thorpe that might have 15, 15, and 15. So this will give us some of that flexibility, that we can have more equal class sizes across town, to have more of program equity and more of that continuity for all kids. So again, just as we look at what that actual enrollment growth is, this is a slide that we've used it with our townwide community forums for Smith. So as you can see, our average K to five base will be 1,905 students by 2025, 2026. And then as we looked at our current capacity of 1,440 students, we looked at a school that was for 465 rather than the approximate 300 students where we are now. So as we start to look at what those actual flex zones look like, and the colors are a little tough to see on the projector, but if you look at your screens and we have colored maps available, you'll see that the areas in blue is what we've started to identify as flex zone. So this is the first one for Smith. This is one that we see needing to implement in the near future. So there's an area that borders the Highlands School District and the Thorpe School District. So those would be areas that would have flex. As we move forward, we also identified areas that would help us with growth in the future or depending on how students shift for many years to come. So you'll see that we've identified areas for the Thorpe School that would be current Riverside and Great Oak areas, so areas that bordered that. So again, that's kind of in that, if you can see that flex zone down between the Great Oak and the Riverside School. We then looked at the same thing to identify areas for Great Oak. So as you can see, we're going around the town and looking for those areas for all five of our elementary schools. So again, this would be areas that were between Thorpe and Riverside and then the Highlands District, so which is in blue. So then this is a, so then we also look to identify areas for the Highlands School and the Riverside School. So those areas are part of this all-inclusive flex zone map. We didn't include them in your presentation because those are schools when we look at today as well as in the next five to seven years that are at capacity that we don't see, you know, having those flex zones that would be having students go to those schools, but more those flex zones would be the students that would be headed to other sections of town. So this is a map, kind of a summary map of what we would look at to use as our master flex zone map. As we look at criteria for placing students, as we said, we're really looking at kindergarten students and new enrollments to be the area where we, where this takes hold, siblings and families getting to stay in their current school. So if you have a third grader at Highlands, we're not coming in and saying that now one of your students, you know, your kindergarten student's going to go to Smith and your third grader's going to go to Highlands. We want to keep families together. That's an important part of their educational experience. We're going to look at total school enrollment, so as we look at what the size of the school are, and then as we talked about the class size at the grade level, and then where possible, family preference, so the family has a preference. We've also updated our elementary street listing that's posted on our website. So after we have our meeting, we can post that, and it is listed through what is the traditional home district. So the school where your traditional home district is will be, the preference will be the first choice. So we're not going to kind of, you know, just kind of arbitrarily do it. We are going to keep those home districts as they were from the start and then look at how we can keep segments of students together. So that if we have one certain road and there's 20 kids and we have an enrollment problem, if we can move all 20 of those kids from the same neighborhood to go to the Smith School, then we'll keep all 20 of those kids together, then you still have that neighborhood experience. We'll still obviously have those traditional divides where they have existed before, or some areas where that won't work that neatly, but that will be the goal. And then if we look at next steps, so we'll roll this concept into our placement of kindergarten students for the 2019-20 school year. The school assignments are distributed at kindergarten orientation in April, so we'll have those ready for their packets that night. And then we'll be looking to reconfigure our bus routes to make sure that we can get all the students to school and on buses. So, you know, on, let's say, Route 62, where we might have had one bus going that would just go to one school, that bus, now we might have two buses going that's stopping, that it'll be clearly identified which school they're going to. So we did look at if you went back to that master flex zone map, we really looked at Route 62 and Route 35 as kind of those main routes through Danvers. So many of those zones are off of those two main routes. So if a bus is going down Route 62, they can take a left, do a segment of the route, come back onto 62 and, and keep going, or the same thing with 35. So to use those as those access points. And then, well, any questions that you might have?
I know, I know I have to go last, but I'm not going to for one second. What's the oval? What's the oval in?
So the oval is a current flex zone that we already have. So we've actually been utilizing a flex zone concept for the last five, probably 10 years. Time flies. It's the current Kirk Pride Drive.
Oh, okay.
So we've been using that between Great Oak Highlands and the Smith School.
Okay. Great.
So that's, yes.
All right. I just had.
It wasn't a new concept when MSBA, right, presented it to us. It was a, oh, you could actually expand this concept and leverage it.
Rogue, a rogue section that could go to any, you can go anywhere if you live in that one section. All right. Questions? Anybody? Dave?
No. I, you know, went through this with the policy committee. I just think it's really important to note that, you know, the plan is to keep families together. So if you start as a kindergartner and you have a, you know, a younger sibling, that younger sibling's going to follow that kindergartner at whatever school they're at. I think that might be a concern out there, and I think you guys have worked hard to make sure that's not going to be the case.
Yeah. Can't happen. We're not going to move kids mid-elementary career.
Right.
So this is for kindergarten students coming in or new enrollment.
So basically kindergarten, new students without family that's already in elementary schools. Okay. Eric?
Anytime you have a population that you're trying to distribute to five different locations or more, a line has to be drawn somewhere, you know, it's just like the voting list, precincts, I think it's five and six goes right through the middle of my street. Okay. I mean, that's just how it has to be sometimes, as long as, and obviously it's more important for schools and where students go. But as long as you're looking at the right things and it's clear that this is a thoughtful process, you've looked at the right things. It's still neighborhood schools, it's just where is, where the line may be drawn may be a little flexible, depending on what a population looks like in any given year. As a result, yeah, sometimes, you know, you'll have students in a neighborhood going to two different schools, but, I mean, that's okay. When I grew up, some of my best friends were at the St. Mary's School. They lived in my neighborhood and we all get together after school. So it really, I think, is going to work out okay. The key for people to understand is, one, yes, keeping families together, and two, it's still neighborhood schools. You're still going to be in what amounts to the closest school that you can be in. The concept of what your neighborhood is may have to expand a little bit, but it's clear to me what you're doing is as sensible as possible to give the least disruption possible to the students, and that's what's important.
Mary Beth?
I know. I agree with Eric. The flex zones being near the schools that they're already near. It's not, you know, someone down on Elliott Street's not going to the Smith School because it's too far. The distance, like you said, Keith. So the flex zones make sense as to where they are. And, yeah, I mean, I don't really have anything else. You did a great job explaining it. And you said that this is going to start next September or with this kindergarten class?
Yes.
Yes. Go from there. Okay. Very good.
And the other thing to remember is, you know, as Eric pointed out, is that, I mean, there's always a line.
Right.
You know, this is just, the line's moving a little bit, but there's still a line. So there's always going to be, you know, the situation where some people that could live next door to each other are not going to different elementary schools. The key is that, again, the families are kept together, they go, they go, can't have parents dropping kids off at two different elementary schools in the morning. And, and I think it just makes sense. I think the way that it's being drawn out makes sense and hopefully it'll work well. All right. We're good.
So do we need to vote for a first reading? Is it?
No.
That's just the presentation. Okay.
Yeah. All right. Fundraising requests.
Thank you. Okay. The superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for the classes of 2019, 2021, and 22 for Say Yes to the Prom Semi Dress and for our Best Buddies Jewelry Sale.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Field trips.
Okay. The superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight out-of-state field trip requests for our high school DECA to the Boston Copley, March 7 through the 9, 2019, for our DHS chorus students to the Boston Seaport Convention Center on February 28 through March 2 of 2019, and for our high school chorus students to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, April 4 through the 7, 2019, and for our Smith School chorus band and, it was chorus and band to Salem, New Hampshire on May 31 of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Communications.
Thank you. We always include our North Shore Education Consortium in working, the board of directors are working with our executive director and finance director on the upcoming budget as we are here.
Okay. And Eric, you've already done legislation.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
You made a deal with me.
I did.
Deep?
As was said earlier, Deep hosted the 10th Annual Spelling Bee last week here at the high school, and it did go 12 rounds, and it was great. Kids were all great. And Ayesha Patel was our winner. She now will be testing again to make the regionals that will be happening this spring in Lynn. And then the winner out of that will go to the National Scripps in Washington DC later in the spring. So I want to congratulate her on her win. And I want to thank George Kuzos from Cross Mortgage Company, who is a sponsor, he's been sponsoring the T-shirts for a number of years, and Danvers House of Pizza, Chick-fil-A, Cherry Farm Creamery for their in-kind donations as well. Truly a community event. And I want to thank Adam and the curriculum directors and all our volunteers for that evening. Julie McDonald came back and was our announcer, so that was very exciting. Our monthly Deep meeting is this Wednesday. We will be meeting at 7:45, weather permitting, at the Holton Richmond Middle School. We will have our meeting and then we will tour the library, the maker space, the French Corner, the school store, some of the things that Deep has supported or sponsored through Deep Grants this year. Anyone's, or everyone's invited to come and hope to see some new faces.
Thanks. And just so George gets his due, Cross Country Mortgage.
Oh, sorry.
Is the name of the company.
Cross Mortgage.
He just forgot the country. That's okay.
All right. Cross Country.
Danvers Cares. Jeff's not here. Do we have any Danvers Cares updates?
The family workshops are continuing, so we have that on our website and the Danvers
Uh, Danvers Cares. Jeff's not here. Do we have any Danvers Cares updates?
The family workshops are continuing. So we have that on our website and the Danvers Cares website also. We're working with Lyle on some grants coming up. So we'll be submitting some grants on behalf of Danvers Cares. And the Light the Night Purple, the steering committee, I believe, is meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Yes, they are meeting tomorrow. So that's in progress for being planned for this May.
And then the only thing I would add is the annual teen health and safety guide is in the works. So if there are any businesses or organizations out there that are interested in getting really cheap advertising and an amazing guide that's going to be distributed throughout the Danvers Herald as well as businesses around town, please contact Lyle because I know he would love to hear from you.
Okay, great. CPAC, when is the next CPAC meeting? Do we have that?
CPAC meeting is scheduled for the, um, the video workshop, um, stuff in the afternoon.
Okay.
And then it's just, you know, the marketing, the, and that, if you, if you, um, what are the CPAC, um, I'm doing.
Okay, all right. So February 28th is the next CPAC meeting?
Yes, and they do have a Facebook page. So under Danvers CPAC, which is the link on our agenda. So it has all the information about the screen time presentation coming up.
All right, great. We've already done policy. Human rights, do we have, again, Jeff isn't here. Do we have anything on human, all right. So we'll, we'll let Jeff catch us up next month on human rights. Minutes.
I move to approve and release the minutes from the January 14th, 2019, regular meeting, and to approve and not release the minutes from the January 14th, 2019 executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Budget?
This is my favorite budget report of the year because we're halfway through the school year and we spent about half our money.
Excellent.
So we are right on track.
Very good. All right, personnel.
Just primarily leave of absences and a few appointments for lingering openings.
All right, thank you, Keith. Uh, next meeting is?
March 11.
Does anybody have anything else? Dave?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, Danvers.